That's kind of where my thought was.
Good evening. It's 5:00. We're going to start first with a public hearing on ordinance number 17-23, which deals with the parking areas and the truck stop ordinance. We've had a first reading. Now we're going to have a public hearing, and later we'll have the second reading. So, has everyone signed in? We need attendance for the public hearing. If everyone's signed in, or if not, please come forward, or wherever the sign-in sheet is. Keith, if you would, just let's just put it on the table, and people can come up if they want. Please come up. Thank you. All right, everyone has signed in, I trust? Okay. As I say, this is a public hearing on that ordinance. Is there any comment from the public? Well, hearing none, seeing none on the comments. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make such a motion?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That concludes the public hearing on ordinance 17-23. We'll now move to the meeting of September 25th, 2023, of the mayor and aldermen in the town of Montegoat. So, if you're advised, Dan, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. Let's pray. Our Father, again with grateful hearts, we assemble ourselves here this evening, thanking you for the opportunity to do the business of governing of the town of Montegoat. We just thank you for every opportunity that we've been granted, and thank you for the many blessings we've received over the last several months and the challenges we've faced. We thank you for helping us through those, and we ask that you continue to do the same. We thank you for this meeting tonight, and ask that you just guide our hearts and minds together as a community of neighbors and friends, and continue to help us to work out the issues that we face day after day. So, we commit these things to you now, in our Savior's Blessed Name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, we have roll call, please. City Recorder?
Here.
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 Here. You've received the minutes in your packet from the previous meeting of September 6th. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
I move to make a motion to approve minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes as submitted? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any citizens wish to be heard at this time? This may be the best time. At the end of this meeting, we're going to move to executive session, that we'll have some matters to discuss. So, if there's citizens coming now, feel free to come up. Mr. Waller?
I just want to say thank you to the city, whoever is responsible. The streets of Montegoat seem to be getting cleaner, so somebody is enforcing something that previously has been a little lax, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for that comment. That goes to Mr. Butner and his crew, his road department, every other department, but thank you for maintaining that, doing the mowing, and before you know it, you'll be doing leaves, I guess, huh? But thank you for that, Keith.
Yeah, it's our public service work, isn't it?
Yes. But let the men know as well. I appreciate it. My communications, I will chime in from time to time during the meeting. There's nothing specific now. The only thing, calendar of events, the chili cook-off that the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring will be here, or will be held, October 20... Michelle?
8.
Thank you. October 28th. So, that'll be ongoing, and we plan on observing, in some way or fashion, the Veterans Day observation. Sometimes due to weather, sometimes due to availability, there may not be crowds, but we'll display the flags and honor those veterans that have answered the call. Okay. Reports of committees and members, police department?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start from the beginning, like normal. Number total of dispatched calls from the dispatch, 911 dispatch centers, is going to be 372 calls for the month. The number of reports taken by the department are 28. The number of citations written by the department are going to be 51. The number of traffic stops are 168. The total number of arrests, 7, going down, which is what we want to happen. Total number of motor vehicle crashes, minor crashes, are 6, which are what we want to continue to happen as well, stay as low as possible. The other reports are listed as miscellaneous theft, burglary vandalism, and tampering with evidence. As we continue to patrol our city, we ask that you keep your cars locked, and your buildings on your property locked, because we are going into a season where thefts tend to rise nationally, okay? We're going to do our best to continue controlling, to mitigate that, but just keep that in the back of your mind, okay? We are... So, this next portion is going to be focused on our riding and biking trails, okay? So, we are aware of individuals who are riding motorcycles, in particular, side-by-side on the mountain goat. I do have photographs of the individuals who we are currently trying to identify, and as soon as we do identify them, we will charge them accordingly, okay? What we ask the citizens to do is follow the rules of the goat trails, okay? Those are simple. Motorized vehicles don't belong on the goat trail, okay? To ensure the safety of walkers, cyclists, men and women pushing their children in strollers. So, we ask that you just follow those to keep injuries down, because we want all the citizens and visitors to be safe in Montegoat. And just as ending, as always from Montegoat Police Department, we thank the citizens for your continued support, and we will continue to provide the highest level of service to the Montegoat community.
Thank you. I will point out, as a follow-up to your previous reports in the previous months, there was an article in the Swannie Messenger just this past week about scams in seniors and phone calls that aren't really valid.
Right.
So, once again, you were timely, and we should follow that, and thank you for that. Any aldermen have questions? I'm sorry?
Jessica asked about a clarification on electric bikes. So, it's worth pointing out that the Mountain Goat Trail, just like many of these recreational trails across the country, are partially funded with federal highway dollars, and the federal government has defined which bicycles, which electric bicycles and ESIS are considered bikes and which are not. And so, Class 1 and Class 2 electric bicycles are allowed on the Mountain Goat Trail and any recreational trail across the country, but a Class 3, which is one which operates basically like an electric motorcycle, and I think it has speeds in excess of 35...
35, 30 to 35, yes.
Yeah. Those are not allowed. Those are considered motorized vehicles, according to federal law.
Right, correct.
Any other questions from the aldermen? Okay. Thank you, Keith.
Thanks.
Fire department?
Fire department's ran 27 emergency calls for the month of September. Some of the folks have seen us out doing the pre-plans for the commercial businesses, all the information that we're taking from that's going from our businesses and putting it into a cloud database, so the fire truck and all the firemen's able to access it on their phones or whatever. That was actually credibility for the ISO. The ISO inspector encouraged that, so that's kind of a good thing. The fire hydrant program's still active. There was 146 fire hydrants out of 212 that's been painted and flowed to the NFPA 291 guideline. That was on the Rogers stuff that they passed over out of that list that we've been working on. On the 2022 flow testing of the hydrants, there were 29 hydrants that was listed for repair, and that was $26,300 that they had listed on the bid to repair the hydrants. We've tried to be working on them in-house to repair them. There's 10 of them on the list that's been repaired. It's fully operational now and had the flow test done to it. That saved the town about $7,700, so that was an awesome advantage for us. Some of the general repairs listed are just cosmetic things. If these hydrants were turned the wrong way, and the steamer, the big plug, wasn't facing the street, the company wrote that up as a discrepancy. It's not that big of a deal. I mean, that fire hose is able to hook to us, so I just black line those off of there. It's not that big of a deal for us, and it's no points violations from anybody, so they're operational. A few of them have seals and seat issues, and we'll continue to perform the list. I mean, all of them in this town right now is operational that I know of. We've not got anything that's not working. Members are continuing their bi-weekly training requirement for the commission standards on 40 hours. So, each one of these firemen's required to have 40 hours of training per year, men. So, we've been doing it every other Wednesday night as their training drill, and all of the numbers has been turned into state, so that's helping out greatly. They've used about 12,000 gallons for September on city water. That's all I've got for the fire department. If anybody's got any questions on it.
Any questions from the aldermen and the fire department report?
I had somebody ask me a question. I don't know the answer. The 911 address markers at people's homes, how do folks get those?
They can come to City Hall. There's an application, I believe, still here at City Hall. Is it online, too?
It is online?
Yep. You can go to our town website, too, and usually they'll fill them out here, and I don't remember the exact prices of them. Yep. So, $30 for the sign, and then the girls will put it in the box, and then the fire department will make it and install it for them. Have any questions?
I want to say thank you, before you move from fire department, for hosting the scouts. That was awesome.
That was fun. So, what troop? Tell them about the... What troop was that?
So, that was Troop 12 out of Tracy City, and Cub Scout Pack 3212 out of Tracy City. And so, we got them now started. The scouts are now started on their fire merit badge, and the Cub Scouts all got check-offs on fire safety. And we got God a pizza, too.
Yeah. We was invaded with, what, about 30 kids that come to the fire hall, working on their scouting badges. We had a pizza party, and we had a pretty good night. It was fun.
Thank you.
I want to thank the fire department for Monday night, the fresh meat.
Tonight's the last night. Actually, there's chili tonight. They're having chili tonight, so y'all stop by.
It's been good food.
Thank you. We've enjoyed doing it. The building inspection side, there's eight building inspections that's been done. These eight inspections include, like I always do, the repents finals, along with certificate of occupancies. There's been four new building permits files that's been created, and there's actually six, because I just picked up two more today. So, there's six building files created for the month of September, so we're still continuing to grow and build in Montegoat. Code side, AJ's with me. I'll let him talk to you about the codes enforcement side.
Good afternoon. Codes enforcement, we've got five violations that's been served throughout the town for this month, three of which of those five were closed. One within 24 hours was closed, and additional one for a total of four files been closed for the remainder of what I've served from January to this year to now. Right now, there's probably six outstanding from this month and previous months that has longer times for correction, and got two items to appear in city court on Thursday, on the 28th.
And on the code side, too, there's... Everybody, I can assure you, has got some kind of animal complaint, that they've seen an animal, or there's dogs running at large. Those dogs, if we can find the rightful owner, where we don't have an animal control, it's kind of hard just to go pick up a dog, because then we've got to do something with the dog. And I've explained it to the public that I ask, if we can find the rightful owner, we can hold them accountable. If it's just a dog running at large, it's hard for us to pinpoint and do anything with it, you know what I mean? So, I'm sorry for your nuisance. I'm sorry for your hassle. Just try to see where the dog goes, and let us know and address, and we'll try to address it and take care of it.
Alderman, any questions for codes or building?
This is someone from the community. Asked me about trailers, travel trailers that people keep at their homes. Are there regulations about that?
Yeah, there are. So, anything that you're living in, a lot of these travel trailers, and I've ran into this in the past, there's a lot of these travel trailers, folks have electric hookup going to them, where they can plug them in, winterize them. They've got water running to them, where they can winterize and do odds and ends. I don't really see that that's an issue myself. I mean, if you're staying inside that trailer and taking up residency, then that's the problem. So, I mean, I don't know of any ordinances that says you can't have a travel trailer and have electric or water hookup, you know? But staying in is where the problem's at. That kind of answer?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Parks and Rec?
I don't have any.
Okay. Street department, Keith, anything?
Just the stuff we had on the parking lot and stuff out here, you know?
Yeah, which we'll get to. Okay. Utility manager? Travis, you want to start first, or John?
The first thing to report is that we had a bid opening for the DeBose tank. We had three bidders, and G&amp;L Tank was the low bidder at $353,750. They were the group that performed the rehab of the city tank, so we're pleased to see them get the bid. My understanding is they're eager to get started and have that done, so as soon as the board approves and we get contracts executed, we'll have a pre-construction meeting and get a timeline of construction from them, once we get to that point. So, the price was very comparable to the last tank, so nothing that we expected, or unexpected, rather. So, I guess we're looking for a motion from the board to accept the bid.
It's under new business, and we will do that.
Can you tell us what alternate number one logo for tank is on the bid?
Yes, it's... We kept that separate, similar to what we did last time, such that the town decided they didn't want anything on there, then they could not choose to not have it on there.
Okay, so the alternate number one logo for tank is simply Town of Montegoat, like on the other one?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time? Is that it, basically, for utility manager?
I think so. We're still working on the rehabilitation project. There's some environmental things that have to be done as far as the funding agencies go, and so as soon as they finish that, then we'll finalize the design, and when we get to that part, we'll be ready to advertise for that project.
If you would, just say a word or two about grease traps.
Sure.
Let me say this as an introduction. Grease traps are becoming a situation in our sewer lines especially. Travis and I have been talking about informational mailings, because we can't have grease going down the drains, be it residential or commercial. So, if you would just take a minute to address that?
So, as part of the CCTV or cammering of the sanitary sewer that took place back this past spring, we identified a significant amount of grease throughout the system, both in residential and commercial areas. Typically, commercial areas should have a grease trap. Homes, residential homes typically would not have a grease trap. Every sewer system is plagued with grease. It's problematic, because it gets into the sewer pipes and hardens, and causes blockages, blinds, pumps, so that they don't work properly, causes issues with equipment at the treatment facility. And so, grease is very problematic. It's hard to get in, to get out of the system. Once it gets in, it requires extensive cleaning, which is very expensive, once it's in there. And so, once grease gets started in the sewer pipes, then all the grease begins to just adhere to the grease that's already there, and so it just exponentially continues to build. And so, a lot of communities or utilities implement an awareness program, because not all folks know that pouring grease down your sinks is a bad idea. And so, that might be a standard procedure for some households, and that until you have a blocked sewer pipe or a blocked drain because of grease, you probably weren't aware that that may not have been an issue. But it is an issue that causes, results in cost to the utility, which in turn results in cost to the ratepayers, because it is an enterprise fund, and the services must be paid by the ratepayers. And so, as part of doing everyone's part as a resident, the utility, because of the extensive grease, even in residential areas, I think is going to implement, over the next several months, a plan to educate the public on not to dispose of your grease through the sewer system, through your sinks. There's other ways to do that, and just for those who didn't know, it was a bad thing. It is a bad thing, and so...
Okay. Well, John was successful in resolving one problem recently. Do you have anything to add, or anything for utility manager report?
No, just on the grease that I'm supposed to meet was McDonald's right at 9:00. We won't camp reserves, and out to the main.
Okay, good. Thank you. Do you have any other thing, anything else? Travis, that's it. Thank you.
I have a question, Travis. A follow-up to the briefing you gave us on the sewer system and how the funding was going to play out on our sewer issues. I had a thought after we left, that during the last administration, you know, we had thought that each of these tanks was going to run about 3/4 of a million for rehab, and they're coming in, you know, 350. And I know we had set aside a CD to mature in time to be able to rehab that second tank, and I'm wondering, as we try to come up with priorities over the next couple of months on how we triage sort of what needs to happen in the sewer, does it make sense to think about taking some of those funds that we had earmarked for the tank, that we're not going to need for the tanks, and putting them towards some of our sewer issues? You know, we talked in that meeting, you talked about prioritizing, and I just wondered, does it make sense to think about that chunk of money, which we'd already sort of mentally decided that it was going to need to go toward rehabilitation? Do we get economies of scale?
I mean, I think it's certainly worth consideration. One thing to keep in mind is that rehabilitation projects are typically large, just because of the nature of construction. And so, what some of money might seem large, like a couple hundred thousand dollars, that really doesn't, it's not going to get you very far on a rehabilitation project.
Sure.
And so, it depends on what type of monies that we're talking about, I guess, number one.
I think it's about 3/4 of a million.
And so, certainly looking at your budgets, and your operating expenses and things would be a prudent thing to do before making that decision, but I think it's certainly worth looking at, discussing, just because there's plenty to do, but you might not want to wipe out savings or operating costs, depending on what you have coming up. So, I think it's certainly worth looking at.
Okay. Any other questions of Travis or John, on utilities?
John, I had some questions about the report. It looks like, on the water side, that we sold about 4 million gallons more than we produced or purchased from Tracy City. Do we have maybe a problem with those numbers? We're at 9.4 on produced, 275 purchased, and 568 purchased, but we sold 15 million.
I just gave you the actual report. I want to have this report that tells how much we sold.
Okay, so, well, it looks like it's in the production side, I would think. But that looks like we, our unaccounted water loss, it looks like we sold an additional 4 million gallons than we made. I also had a question on wastewater service sold. We don't have that. That one's empty.
What is then?
That's the amount of gallons that comes through your billing software, that tells you how many gallons of sewer you charge people for. So, the difference between that and how much you treat it is I and I, which is the problem we're dealing with.
Because we don't bill gallons of sewer, it's based on the water usage.
But, yeah, but that's all you put down.
But it doesn't give you a total of sewer.
But it gives you a total of water customers who were billed for sewer. It gives you a total number of gallons billed for sewer.
But it doesn't break the bank that way.
When we looked at the software a couple months ago, it did. It was reported last week. Okay. Well, it's just, if we're going to try to figure it out, I and I, I think we need to be reporting to the community on a monthly basis how that operates, and we're just going to need some data for that.
We'll find that in the work comp.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I guess Planning Commission, we will be meeting, just as an announcement, the first Tuesday in October, which I believe is October 3rd, will be the next Planning Commission meeting. And at the last mayor and alderman meeting, I had mentioned the different aspects that they were considering. Nothing was officially recognized, as I recall, but we'll know more Tuesday, unless there's any comments on the Planning Commission report. Okay.
Yeah. Did we figure out whether we get to vote on the square footage amendment that was passed at the Planning Commission, or did that... Is that come to the council, or was that something that just happens?
It hasn't come to the council. I'm sorry. It has not come to the council. It will. I have an email from Chad that he wants to further discuss it on Tuesday.
Okay, so that's why we didn't see it under new business. Okay.
What time is that, the evening of Tuesday?
5:00. Okay, alderman. Doreen, anything?
No, Sarah, do not.
Jessica?
Yes, sir.
Dan?
Nope.
Nate?
Just that square footage question.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to old business. These involve three second readings of ordinances. The first one being the second reading of ordinance 17-23, which is the truck stop issue, which we just had the public hearing on. I'll entertain a motion to accept the second reading of ordinance number 17-23.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading of ordinance number 17-23.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The ordinance passes. Second reading of ordinance number 18-23, that was a bucket truck repair, which is about to begin, and purchasing a trailer for emergency use, as the original trailer was stolen. I'll entertain a motion to accept on second reading, ordinance 18-23.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This budget requires roll call, isn't it?
Oh, was it? I'm sorry. I thought it was a book.
Yes.
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 Yes. Sorry. Thank you for that. Second reading of ordinance 19-23, those were the payroll adjustments for bonuses. I'll accept a motion to approve on the second reading, ordinance 19-23.
I'll make a motion to accept the reading of the ordinance 19-23 bonuses.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that concludes old business. Moving on to new business, we have some business permits. First one being Cool Springs Automotive, CS Automotive. Is there a representative here? Please come forward and tell us what you have planned and what's going on.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kim Arnhimer. My husband, Rob, and I own CS Automotive. Official name is Cool Springs Automotive. We DBA is CS Automotive. We've been in business for 2000, for 2017 years. It feels that way. We've been in business for 17 years, since 2006. We currently have a location in the Brentwood area. Had an opportunity to purchase the business and partner with a company to buy the building from Avery and Lisa Kellerher. They are exiting the industry, the business, for health reasons, I understand. We are planning on taking possession of the property on Friday evening, as they close on Friday, the end of the day of Friday. We have, just a little bit about who we are. We are a full-service automotive repair. We are currently very active in our community down the Brentwood area. Plan on bringing that to the Mont Eagle area. We are involved in our Chamber of Commerce, the, our Brentwood Rotary Club, the events, sports and sponsorships for our local events. We also do community educational events, and we have done automotive repair badge training for the scouts as well. So, we plan on bringing that to the Mont Eagle area. We do, we don't live locally, however, we will have plenty of representation from the local area. We are currently staffed. One employee is an employee that will be remaining, that's Robert, will be remaining with the business. And we've hired a gentleman from Palam and another gentleman from here in Mont Eagle, or actually, I think Tracy City area, I believe is where he lives. So, we will have plenty of local representation. My husband and I will be active in the business, as well as our Director of Operations, Tom, who will also be very active in the business locally. Anything else you'd like to know?
That was very complete. Thank you.
Where exactly is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Mont Eagle Tire and Auto Repair on 904 West Main.
So, you're gonna have a local manager onsite? Are you gonna be doing that?
Yes. We'll have an assistant manager, and then we'll have a manager that'll be going between two locations. And we will also be very involved. And it's an hour, hour and 10-minute drive from my house, so it's not very far at all.
Any other questions from the Alderman?
Sounds good.
Good. I hope to see you there.
Dan, if you would continue to press that down.
I'll make a motion.
No, press that down, Sophie.
I've got it. We've got.
Will you all have that? Okay. But I need that back. Okay. I need a motion to accept the business permit.
I'll make such a motion. We accept a business permit for the auto repair shop.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion further on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome to Mont Eagle.
Congratulations.
Next one is Echo E-Bikes LLC. And Mr. Powell?
Yes. My name's Wesley Powell. And my wife and I moved here a little over two years ago to Tracy City. I've been building homes for 45-plus years. We're here, I'm trying to retire. And I've always liked bikes. And my brother has a bike shop in Florida. And long story short, we decided that we'd open a e-bike store. We're not sure about the rentals yet, but, because the insurance is really expensive. But we'll see. Come next spring, we'll see what happens. We're gonna be over here at the Country Mart, and we're gonna be taking over that space. The clothing store is there, 1045 Main Street. A little bit nervous, but I won't be driving around and seeing all these different people every day like I do now. But I look forward to bringing something to the community. Yeah, and contributing something to the community. I think that we can do that very well with the e-bikes.
Are these, would these e-bikes allow them on the grid?
Class one and class two mostly. The class three, I'll talk to the chief about that, the permitting and so on. Class three is a little more, a little more powerful. And they go pretty fast, and you'll see them on the street. I don't know if you've ever seen them.
Class three's a LSV though, isn't it? Low-speed vehicle, so it could actually go 35, and we got 35 miles per gallon.
Class three could do better than 40, yeah.
You could be on the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alderman, have any questions?
Are you gonna do regular bikes or just e-bikes?
We may do some mountain bikes and road bikes, probably more of the higher end. But e-bikes mainly. I have a relationship with three different companies, and we've worked that all out there, waiting for me to plant my feet, so they can start sending them to me.
Any further questions? I'll accept a motion to approve the business permit.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I do have a question. One of the things that we used to do with every business permit was verify the codes enforcement, or the billing inspector would verify that all life safety issues had been met before we issued a permit. And we don't seem to be doing that anymore. I'm assuming that's still happening. Is that, is there a reason why we changed that? Not that it would affect you, it just came to my mind. Yeah. Travis?
They get the permit, they usually call, they put it in my box, and I just kind of review it, go over, if there's any questions or anything, I need to contact the property to make a phone call to them.
Okay. So, my assumption is right. It's still happening. I just, I know for a while there were a couple of permits that were not issued because the life safety certificate had not been issued during the last administration. And I just know we haven't talked about it anymore. It's done.
Also, the store will be run by myself, my wife, and our children, my son and daughter. So, if you see, if you come by there, anybody you see in there is probably family, yeah.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Welcome. Okay. Mr. Brett DeBalsall? Is he here?
I don't know. It's just, it's you guys' dance, but it's just something I can do for you guys.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. So, Esme O'Mica Scarcio owns Cove Creek Farms and the acreage that goes around the property. And we're looking at a proposed event in September of 2024. It would be an outdoor music festival and kind of a athletic performance event, which would include a race, a 5K race, 10K race. Ultimately, to, this has been on, you know, a passion of mine, working with the chamber, trying to bring additional tourism, awareness to the mountain, highlight the incredible beauty and hospitality the town and surrounding area has to offer, continue to bring back tourists over and over, and, you know, funneling business towards all the local restaurants, hotels, and so forth. But what I come to you guys for is, obviously, this is gonna take a little bit of a support from the town to pull off an event like this. We'd be looking at 5,000 to 10,000 people in attendance. If you look at the picture on page two, it kind of gives you a little bit of an idea as to where the stage would go on the property. There's 100 acres, Mica, if I'm correct, 100 acres of property.
100 acres of pasture.
Pasture, which would be used for parking. I have been in touch with TDOT as far as any sort of strain on 24 and 41. But we would use, and we'd hire our security to be able to properly guide and keep patrons safe and parking safe. But the stage would be kind of kept back. Near 24 is one idea. Another idea is a little bit above where Cove Creek is now, right there. But overall, the goal would be to minimize the noise to the town. But still, you know, providing a good environment ambiance for all of the attendees. The, there is, you know, so parking, there would be no, obviously, no expense to the town, only just tax revenue, tax income from the businesses, the sales, the hotels. We, we believe that as far as parking is concerned, that one, where's that little mic package thing there? Okay. So, one acre can hold up to five concert attendees. And we have, basically, the stage would be around 10 acres, so it would be plenty of breathing room for all, even if we had up to 10,000 people there. Again, we're looking at anywhere between 5,000 to 10,000 people. You have a list of, on there, of potential bands, talent that we would be pursuing, some local, some on the bigger end. And some ticket scaling there and how we would, we would structure cost. And we would have a production company hired as well. Porter Potties, we would have plenty to accommodate up to 10,000 people. And again, we'd probably be working with local authorities and TDOT on any sort of traffic control.
Couple of questions. Do you enter at the present entrance?
Mica, he's asking where the entrance to the parking would be currently, or where we would structure that.
And is there a charge for ticket sales, et cetera, food trucks, or?
Yeah. So, there would be, so the ticket sales would be, to get into the event, would give you full access for the day. And we'd be looking at year one and doing this for a one-day event, whereas Bonnaroo is, you know, multiple-day event, where there are people camping. So, the toll on hotels would be less of a strain, so we could accommodate it, because people could, could come in for the day and leave. If there were people coming out of town, that we would have, you know, at least that option there for them. But, but yeah, so, you know, based on structuring like a 5K event in the morning, there'd be an additional cost for that. But the single fee would get you in for all shows throughout the day.
It's a one-day event?
Yes, ma'am. One day.
You've got from 11:00 AM, on here, local act? Was that supposed to be 11:00 AM or 11:00 PM?
So, yeah, the first act proposed would be around 11:00 in the morning. But there would be events like the race, like a 5K, 10K race, which would take place on the mountain go trail, would, some of the fitness stuff would be in the morning, which would be much less crowds. Whereas, actual people attending for the music would be around 10, 11:00 in the morning, and run through around 11:00 at night.
Okay. My question would be, what time would be cut off as far as music goes that night?
Yeah. I think the last, the last one we have set at 9:00 PM, so 11:00 would be 11:00 o'clock on a Saturday night. The proposed dates would be September 28, 2024, as an alternative, September 21st, 2024.
I'm sorry, again, September 21st or 28th?
The 28th would be the preferred date, as we go to bands, based on the approval of the town and support from the town. Then we would go to the, to the booking agents to get some of these bands. And then, from there, you know, that would depend on who we get, because some of them may not be available. But, yeah, it would, it would, the date would prefer to be 28th, as 21st as a backup.
Could you keep the council updated periodically about what's going on, how many bands you got, what you need, what you don't need?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So, the way it would work is, based on town approval, I would want, I would want to get the county mayors involved. And I would imagine that even though it's primarily on Grandy County, so with Mayor Brady, but also involving Mayor Jackson as well, just to get, keep them in the loop, then going to continue to, I'm currently in contact with TDOT, because we're on, I believe, my understanding is 41 and 24 are gonna work through TDOT, not necessarily local authorities. Am I correct with that?
I would think you'd work with local authorities and be local jurisdiction as well.
So, I mean, the, yeah, local police would still be involved, but I would need TDOT approval, if there's any state trooper, state trooper support on 24, coming off the exit, if there was any backup in traffic, which we wouldn't anticipate with that, that level of attendance. And then, depending on people come in. But, yeah, working with TDOT, the counties, and then approaching the bands. And then, as we get approval and confirmation that certain bands are gonna come, then we'll start to pull things together and support the town. If you guys want us here on a monthly basis, continue to offer an update, we can do that.
Well, whenever you think is appropriate, monthly is fine, just to keep us informed. Obviously, the traffic backup would be if there was a problem getting through that gate. That's why I asked.
Yes, sir.
Far enough back and properly staffed, there shouldn't be too much of a traffic issue, I would imagine.
Correct. Yeah. It would be, I mean, much like, even for Bonnaroo, how they have, you know, the cones and their block at the exit, and have the state troopers there, I wouldn't anticipate that with this level of attendance. And we are, you know, in regards to food, we would approach local restaurants first to be able to have priority. We'd want to support the local businesses to be able to support, you know, provide food and concessions. Because we wouldn't be doing that. It would be, we would be kind of hiring a third party for that. Alcohol is being considered. We would approach local, again, local breweries, not necessarily here, but Chattanooga and Nashville to provide it. And we would have an insurance policy that names the town as an additional insured, which obviously includes local liability.
Okay. Any other questions from the Alderman?
I think, since it's on private property, we wouldn't have to issue them a permit per se, but we probably would need to allow them to have music after quiet hours of 10 o'clock. Is that something?
Well, there may be something for one-day events, which I do not know. We can, we'll check.
But I think that would probably be something that we could...
It's lighter than ten, isn't it?
I think quiet hours start at 10. I may be wrong.
But you don't really have anybody around, and they...
Right, right. I mean, I just want to do that, just to cover their bases.
Definitely important to know. I mean, because if we ran the last show at 9, which would be the most popular show, you know, what time we would need to have it done by would be important.
Yeah. I would think we would be able to do that. I just, I think that's probably something we should do ahead of time, just to make sure that you're covered.
Yes. You have some really close timers.
Okay. Some comments from the audience. No, just, Marianne?
Are you hoping this is gonna build to a Bonnaroo size?
No, ma'am. We wouldn't be able to accommodate that. The level of property parking would be limited. There might be potential to expand the parking somewhat onto some of the surrounding pastures. But I think, and I don't want to speak for Mica, because it's his property, but, and he's here. But the plan would be to not exceed what the parking can accommodate, which would be, I would imagine around 10,000 attendees max. Would you agree?
Grant, you had something?
Yeah. Just curious about the Isaiah House and coordinating with them on a event that'd be fairly close to their locale.
You're right. And that would go with the neighboring community, so to speak.
Yes.
Because there are others around there, and we need to talk about that when you're ready.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments?
We would be, not in addition to local authorities, TDOT, state troopers, we would also have private security hired to work the event, which I've already been in contact with. And we're getting bids on that. But we would have several, plenty of security onsite for parking, guiding parking, and keeping people safe, and, you know, in line.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Wilson, what do you need in form of a motion or approval to move forward with Tank Two?
A motion to accept the bid from GNL Tank, and the amount listed in the...
Thank you. I'll accept a motion to that effect, to proceed with Water Tank Two, to accept the bid as submitted by JLA.
Is that the same one that did Tank Number One?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And what was the total of that bid again, please?
353 plus six, 359, 750.
359, 750?
That's with the option.
We'll make a motion. We move ahead with the repair of Tank Number Two, accepting the bid of 359, 750.
Does that include the 6,000 for the logo?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, then.
Doreen, back to our other question. It's 9:00 PM in commercial zones. So...
Travis, is there any, anything else you need to move? Travis, is there any, anything else you need to move forward? All right, because we have spoken about hopefully beating a winter deadline and proceeding as quickly as possible.
This is covered by grant money.
Thank you.
Great.
Yes.
This is a, this tank is covered by the grant money, we probably need to say that, right?
No, not the grant money. They're treating it as maintenance and the grant money would not cover maintenance, so it will have to come out of our operations order and sewer for the enterprise fund.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay. You all have in your packet also the parking lot patch. We had marked off the area. We had met with the contractor. He did a sample at no charge to show us. It seems to be holding. So I would accept a motion to accept the parking area patch for $5,000 in the area that we marked off.
I'll make a motion that we move ahead with the parking lot patch for $5,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
This quote is for $25,000.
No, no, it's just the highlighted 5,000.
Just the highlighted portion, okay.
Because that was what I was waiting on, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Yes, sorry, that's what was getting me.
That's, that's why they highlighted it.
So is it going to be cut out and then redone?
Some of it will be, or it'll be an overlay type of thing, much like the patch was there. They apply a material to bind it and hold it instead of coming up. It was coming up in pieces. And we just wanted to do a little larger area and then we'll see how that goes for next year's budget. But it's starting where one parking area met the other parking area and on that seam and in that general area of drainage. So we're trying to take the next step. If need be, we'll have to do more next year, but we want to preserve it instead of churning up the whole parking lot, which would be very expensive.
So what is the extent we're talking about here?
What I had marked off from the last meeting.
So we're just, we're just sealing a crack in one portion of the parking lot for 5,000?
Yes, not the total.
25,000 is the total parking lot, is that?
Well, I know the word. That had yet to be negotiated. I wouldn't worry about the 25,000 at all. Because before we do any striping, we'd have to see how to repair the surface. We're just going step by step really to try to get some feel for repair without having to churn it all up like you see on the highways. Okay, there's a motion and second. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Do I?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, now we have our last item on new business, the first reading of ordinance 20-23, which you have in your packet. And that was the budget amendment ordinance. I'll accept a motion to accept ordinance number 20-23.
That was not the correct thing to do.
That what?
Sorry, I was trying to get the ordinance up and I hit the wrong button. It was there. Somewhere.
I don't have a 20-23.
I saw it somewhere.
Well, you just passed 19, go up. No, the other.
This way?
Yeah, because it's 20, you pass, it's slow. No.
Where did I send it? Did you send it separately?
Yeah. Oh.
Getting old. I promise I've seen it. I thought you.
I think I saw it too.
Let's see. Oh, no, it's not in this. Because it has the insurance settlement from the accident.
And then the balance. Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll go with what we got.
Well, I actually have an ordinance, so.
It's not on there, right?
That was, that was the extra one that came from Greg.
I must have to pay extra to hit this button. I'm going to try it again now. Nope, yep, I didn't pay enough for the button. Sorry, folks. Ah, there it goes. Yes.
Just hold me that back if they go up to it.
Everybody looked at it?
Okay, so is there a motion for, on the first reading of ordinance number 20-23?
I'll make that motion on the first reading of ordinance 2023 to replace the truck, the street department.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion of ordinance number 20-23?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. We just bought two used patrol cars. Why are we looking at a new truck? Why wouldn't we get a used truck?
The, it was through GOV deals. It's a new truck and the numbers were the same as what we had found for used vehicles. And offset with the insurance, we're taking 20,000 instead of 40,000 round figures. The police cars were used. This one is new for the same numbers.
The same numbers after insurance? Because surely you could get a good used truck for 21,000, right?
No, not anymore. It's a very limited supply of pickup trucks. We had priced looking for used through GOV deals. Our price for a used truck through GOV deals was 44,000 something. The new vehicle with the discount through GOV deals was 44 something. So offsetting the insurance, we thought this would be a better buy. And this was the, we're replacing the vehicle that was damaged in that accident.
Who gets the new vehicle?
It goes to the street department. That's where the old vehicle came from.
She wants to know who gets to drive it.
Who gets to drive it? I don't know. Probably Mr. Butner, being the department head. Okay.
Okay, so I'm kind of confused.
Okay, what?
The difference between the 20, we've got a budget of 24,000 and the truck is 45,000?
Yes, because your, the balance is coming from insurance proceeds.
And we're sure that's the price that we want to pay for a vehicle. I mean, I'm kind of like, no, did we find something cheaper?
Well, not when we went down and looked at, I think, three different dealerships for used vehicles.
I thought, so you did GOV deals or you went to dealerships?
Well, we started with trying to get a price and a feel for the market with used vehicles, not seeing that. We went to the next level, which was GOV deals.
Have we hired this position out yet? That, have we filled Bubba's position, so we need the vehicle now?
Yes. On both counts, we need the vehicle now and we hired someone who's learning the meter reading and turn on, turn off and all the order things that Bubba did.
How does this, how did the old vehicle fit into our, our fleet sort of age? Was it an older vehicle? How?
Probably a, what, 20,000, 20,000. Yeah, I think 6,000.
Well, I know the mayor, you had talked about putting together a replacement schedule. Is this going to be, obviously this would be our newest vehicle, but how does it, how does it affect the replacement schedule?
That's still in the works. I don't have a complete.
Doesn't apply to the replacement schedule. It was an accident that happened that destroyed one of the vehicles, so it might have been the newest truck. What would it matter?
Because if we have a, an older one that would otherwise need to be replaced, it's now going to get bumped from the queue if we've spent the money on another one.
It's just going to move up the ladder.
Okay.
We'll work on replacement schedules. I think we need to replace the vehicle that was totaled. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I have no further discussion.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Do we have the money for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I thank you for all of that. Before I accept a motion to move to executive session, is there any final comment from any of the citizens? Yes, ma'am.
Out in the hallway, there is a display of our commemorative brick campaign to raise money for the community center. And we would like to take a look at it and hold it to the public.
Thank you. What's going on, as you've probably heard in previous meetings, there is a volunteer group that is working on improving the front and landscaping of the community center and the library. Much that was started years ago and now the plan is coming to fruition, so because of the energies of Jackie Ruggles and Marcy and Martha Anne Pilcher and those that were really involved in it, doing the research, now they're trying to raise funds on their own. They're doing it completely not taxing city funds, so if anyone can buy a brick or help in that operation, it'll be for the landscaping of the area to my right, your left. That's part one. Yes?
If we're getting up, it's going to be more than the landscaping. It's going to be getting exterior and interior repairs, helping put activities and clubs together and really trying to get the, the community center up and going, so.
Great, thank you. It's an ongoing project and there is work to be done over there that has not been done, quite frankly, probably in years, so the building needs some freshening up. They've been removing some of the articles that nobody ever wanted or used, so they're making great progress in that area. The other two things I would address are issues that Billy Best brought up at the last meeting. I have checked with the attorneys. It's an ongoing investigation, but I think it'll be all right. If the business owner grants permission, even though the business is closed, vehicles can park there with the permission. If not, the owner should post the property and say, no overnight parking or whatever the rules call for. So that's something that I'm working on and hopefully we'll have finalized by the next meeting. The other thing, the attorney agreed with reinstating 1207C, which was an ordinance that was removed due to a general plan or lack thereof. Because there was not a public hearing and there were some issues about it, it is back in and I'm working on the final details of that. So that addressed those two issues. And I don't have anything else, so. I'm sorry, 1207C were a list of conditions, one of which was the town having a general plan or not having a general plan. Whether or not to remove it or not, according to the attorney, upon review, it was not done properly because you need a second, first and second reading with a public hearing in between. There have been no records found of a public hearing, therefore it's back in.
So what it does is lays out a set of conditions that must be satisfied before a zoning change occurs.
Okay, so if you will excuse us all, I will accept a motion to go to executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second. There not being any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now go to executive session.